Tonight's monthly board meeting?
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated by the agenda. We're going to call to order and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Michelle, could you do roll, please?
Mr. Klaus.
Here.
Mr. Schlecker.
Here.
Mr. Huber.
Here.
Mrs. Summer.
Here.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Here.
Five members present.
Okay, before we set the agenda, Brooke, who's there?
Yes, one slight modification under section 8B. It's for the first, underneath the other section, it's for the first reading. It lists the board policies. No action will be taken tonight. This is just, we present them and then the board will take action at our next meeting.
Okay, can I get a motion to set the agenda?
So moved.
All right, Mark and Carl.
Mr. Klaus.
Aye.
Mr. Schlecker.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.
All right. Well, before we go into reports, I want to thank everybody that was involved with the levy committee and I want to thank the citizens of Salina for voting for our levy. It was a big deal. It passed and we are very, very thankful for all that put a lot of hard work and effort into it. And we also want to thank our community members for voting yes to continue to support Salina School Systems. So with that being said, Sherry or Tressie, I didn't see either one here this evening? Okay, and Joni, I don't see her also. Brooke, you're next.
So it's not really much of a report, but what I would like to get a decision on is if the board is comfortable moving the December meeting from the 15th to the 8th. There are some decisions that we really need to have the board made before we move forward to the first of the year and we also need to set our January organizational meeting. And I think it's important that all board members are present for that, so that's the reason in order to make that happen. Proposing December 8th be our December board meeting. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, then we'll get that communication out if that's...
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, the Spirit Squad.
You guys are gonna come over here. Hi, I'm Alicia Ball, Spirit Squad advisor and Lab Rats advisor. These are some of our kiddos behind us that recently went with us on our trip to New York City and they've got some things that they would like to show you.
Thank you guys for having us. I would like to show you this video that I created of New York.
I think you should tell them what that last thing was.
That last picture was a picture of cheese. It was in one of the, it was in the MAC Museum and I just thought it was really cool. Yeah, the Met, the Met Museum. And I just thought it was really cool, so I had to add it in.
You chose that instead of the real man go and hope you got a seat.
Hi, thank you again for listening to us today. This is a little scrapbook that Mrs. Ball put together for us that just shows our week, maybe?
Oh, it scrolls backwards, isn't that weird? I just learned that, you gotta go that way.
Okay. Some of my favorite things that we did were walk the Brooklyn Bridge. I thought that was very neat to be able to take in the whole city from a very high view. We also were on the Today Show and I very, I thought that was a very cool experience, being able to be on live television. We also saw the Rockefeller Plaza, the observation deck, that was pretty cool. It was a very neat experience to be able to just soak in the city from very high. We also volunteered at a food bank and that was a very good experience to be able to take in and just realize how great and good that we would be able to have it and just being able to help others is a very good thing and it just makes you, it just helps you feel good. We also saw the Bowl. We saw some other things. We went to Macy's, we went to the 9/11 museum, that was very neat to be able to see in person and being able to see like where the towers stood. We sat on a survey and we got a lot of good things back from it. It was very, just, I don't know, being able to hear what people said and what people appreciated from the trip was very neat and just being able to know like how it truly affected the kids that were able to go. Okay.
We did have, we had two kids that wanted to be here with us this evening that are very busy at Kentucky Fried Chicken right now, so we have their videos for you.
Hi, my name is Kedaw Orina. I could not make it to the presentation tonight, so I saw what I shared because I felt like it was important. I wrote a lot about my living, it was pretty interesting. I took a lot of pictures of almost everything there and it was just crazy, it was just crazy to me that the, that the big man was just like broken, void like that. It was so sad seeing all the missing people posters up on all four of the boys staring to the roof. They may realize that anyone can pass away at any time and any moment and it's crazy to think about. Sad aside, there's so many lives were lost that day. I've only been to Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, and Michigan before, so New York City was really different for me. I've never seen buildings that tall before, ever. I really enjoyed sorting and boxing up the food. It really made me feel like I was helping the community and saving lives. I didn't really think about traveling until after New York. It was really piqued my interest. New York has changed my whole entire perspective and I think more people should be gifted with this opportunity to go on this trip. And I'd like to give a shout out to Chicago, uh, Chicago House and Matt Oberman. They felt more like friends than mentors. They made me feel important and Matt had some pretty moving words, especially after the Broadway play. He was really sincere and heartwarming. Thank you for, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Hi, I'm Justin Windu from Salina City Schools and this is what I thought about my New York trip. So first off, Lab Rats, like none of the kids around in my group, none of us played sports, so Lab Rats is like a good group and like gives us a place to be. And my favorite part of the trip was seeing the outsiders. I loved all the sunlight effects, especially when it rained indoors and all the slow motion parts, it was great. And I can totally relate to the outsiders and feeling like you don't belong because you're not wealthy and have a lot of materials, because I wasn't, my family didn't have a lot of money growing up. Also liked the restaurant where they sang Certain Food Does because it was good to hear the pure voices and stuff like that because I used to be in choir back in middle school, so it was really nice. And I, I've also like been in a lot of trouble, so going to the New York trip gave me a chance to, how did I say that? Think before I had it and do better, like especially here at school, because I wasn't doing good before and I'm starting to act and try and do better in school, get my sleeping schedule better, all that good stuff, I actually put in an effort at school. And I also want to give a shout out to Tammy for showing us around New York City, she was the best. And also Miss Ball and Miss Nickel for being the goats and making us out for us.
Okay, do you guys want to talk about your favorite parts?
Um, hi, my name is Aleka Bridge. I think one of my favorite like parts of the trip for sure was like just all of the people. A lot of the kids that were part of the group, I not necessarily would have like talked to in my like day-to-day life, like they're not in my classes or anything like that. And I was really like, kind of like heart warmed that Mrs. Ball chose to reach out to some of those kids that like, like Joey said, aren't very like, I don't know, like maybe doing well in school or like normally would not be able to like have the experience to go on trips like that because their grades aren't good or like they don't have the best attendance or something and like the fact that Mrs. Ball could still give them the same opportunities and like experiences that the rest of us got was really nice and like I got to talk to a lot of them, which I was pleasantly surprised because they're all really nice kids and we all had a really good time. I think my favorite part was definitely the Broadway show as well. It was really cool experience. I've never been to a Broadway show before, so definitely something that I really want to go back to. I was really glad that we like got to fit so many like, like main New York experiences into the whole trip and how much freedom that Mrs. Nickel and like all the chaperones and Mrs. Ball gave us to kind of explore and like choose what we wanted to see because obviously a big group of kids like that, we're not always gonna want to see the same things. So that was really nice, we got to kind of like pick and choose, but we got to see like the main, bigger, like more, like big parts of New York that we like all wanted to see definitely as a group. So I definitely think it was like a really, really good experience, especially like at such a young age and all the kids like from like sophomore to seniors got to see like the lives that, the other types of life that people live, like we're not all surrounded by the same, like we have clothes and we have houses and we have food and we are not all surrounded like that. And that was kind of like a eye-opener when you got to see how people live in New York too. And especially like, like Malia said, working at the food bank, that was really like, we got to talk to some of the kids that, or like the guys that worked there too, that like lived in New York and it was really nice like hearing their like experiences and stuff and like why they decided to work there and stuff, so that was, yeah, I really liked going to New York.
Once again, I'm Weston Graber and I want to hit on some of Aleka's key points and stuff and I really liked working at the food bank because, you know, you never know you're helping, you could be helping these people that don't live a normal life or you could be helping just somebody get back on their feet, help feed their kids or just always being able to do things for others even though they don't have the, like the most stuff. And then with the Broadway show, we learned so much stuff. I mean, I remember reading the book when I was younger and I just always tried imagining it, but I couldn't, so once I saw it on Broadway, it just really hit hard and it's one of the only books I've paid attention to during school and I just really liked being able to see it. And just being able to see all the unique places in New York and just being able to like focus and learn stuff about it and learn about the past and just being able to be there with other people that I've never talked to and just, I ended up talking to new people, I got to know them, I got to learn stuff about them and I got to tell them my story and then returned, they told me their story and it's just a great experience and just being able to learn about other people and help them even though they might not need it or if they could like give them a hug or just talking to them could mean so much to them.
Hi, I truly, truly, truly do appreciate being able to go to New York City. It was never an experience that I thought I would be able to ever be able to go to New York City. Like I didn't get to go to DC, so like being able to go on a school trip was very nice and I'm very grateful that I was chosen to be able to go. It just, it was a great experience. There's kids there that I would have never thought that I would have talked to and I found out their stories and how they've lived and how they grew up.
and how they've lived and how they grew up and being able to do that and like just, it was such a great experience to just get to know each other, to just like, I don't know, be in the moment. I'm very grateful for that experience. I really appreciated the Broadway show again, I feel like that was a fan favorite for everybody. Other things that I appreciate, I really did appreciate the food bank and I thought like, oh, it's not gonna be that fun, we're gonna be working for a few hours, like why don't we go do something else? But truly, it made like me feel good inside, being able to hear those boys like talk about what it's like to live in the Bronx and not be as fortunate as other people, it was very neat to be able to experience that. And just overall, the whole trip was very good and I really would want to say thank you to Mrs. Ball, Mrs. Nickel, Mrs. Kramer for making it happen, for Matt Overman, for Kyle, for all of the chaperones, Tammy and Jerry Borger, everybody that donated, like being able to go on this experience truly just shows you like how grateful you can be in life and just everything that you like, I don't know, it just, everybody that went, it just had a good time, you could tell that everyone was having a good time. It just, being there and not being at school for a few weeks and learning so many things, like for a few days, not a few weeks, but there was just truly, just, I don't know, I just really appreciated my trip. And I just want to reiterate that, how grateful we all are, everybody that went, we were very grateful for everybody that helped us, like with donations, fundraising, anything that anybody helped us with, truly, just thank you.
So you've heard these kids talk about going and serving at a food pantry, but they're not telling the full story. We live in Mercer County and so in three and a half hours, they sorted through 3,400 pounds of food at the food pantry. Those workers had no idea the storm that hit them. And they're like, guys, you got, you slowed down. Tammy was like, go, go take a break. And, and, and these kids were like, we don't need a break. We just rode here on a bus, we're getting back on the bus, we're here to work. And, and their Mercer County worth, work ethic came out and it just showed through. These were kids that I, I didn't know very many of them going on the trip. I'm Matt Overman, I got to go on this, this wild crazy ride, but I would take these kids anywhere. They were respectful, they listened, they learned, they experienced. And you've heard them speak of the power and the meaning behind it. And I will share to you that research shows that all it takes is one adult to change the, the trajectory of a child's life. One, that's it. And if taking a child to New York City and to show them that while Salina is great, you know, we walked three blocks to Times Square, didn't think anything about it. I had to consider whether I was getting in my truck to drive one block to come to the school board meeting tonight. They saw a different world. And we can't run past our troubles, that was what outsiders is, right? We can't outrun our troubles, but the world is big enough that sometimes we just need to see how big it is and that we can change and impact our story. And that is what I heard from these kids time and time again, is this trip impacted my story and therefore will change their life.
Thank you so much.
Alicia, everybody that was involved with the Lab Rats looked like a fantastic trip. Thank you for putting that together.
Thank you.
Okay. Phil, you're up next, my friend.
Um, building's coming along fabulously. They've started, they've got their panels finished up high with the panels that are in the gym, the cafeteria. Um, those panels are all finished, they're working on the trim and the face shop in the areas they can get to so that again, they started at the top, they're working, working their way down. The third floor is just about all painted, so they've got, that's finished, they've got to drag it all up on most of the second floor and they're finishing, again, working down to the first floor. Um, the last couple of, um, non-structural walls are the basemary, the CMU walls, back in the music kind of on the north end of the building, um, that's the last that they need to do in there. I think they had to do some firework prior to getting those walls up. So they're finishing with that, um, working through everything there in the building. Um, continuing to install their electrical technology, mechanicals and stuff. So again, coming along extremely well. The big, just to make it public, the big, there's big access doors. If you drive by and you look at the window on the third floor out on Wayne Street, that's so that they can move a lot of heavier materials and hold their equipment back out. So that'll stay until all the third floor is finished. So all of the built-in cabinetry, the casework, um, that will all come in there in boxes and get assembled. Then on this end of the building, down on the second floor, there's another access door on this end of this wing where they can shove that stuff in, haul it down, get it assembled and finish up the second floor. And then do the same on the first floor, so it just gives them access. So all that will get reinstalled and put back in, so that before it gets finished. We started working, um, working together, we've got, we're working on the, um, legacy hall, some display areas in the legacy hall. We spent a lot of time on that this week, collaborating with Carmen Miller. And we have a, um, a professional photographer, Wes, uh, Jess Kramer, um, on staff with the elementary. And she came in and she took some photos. We collected, we're doing a, um, military history recognition and it was suggested that we do it, um, try and find some local veterans that we can gather up to some memorabilia and artifacts from. So we gathered a bunch of stuff up, we gave it to Jess, she took it into a studio and overnight put together a still life photo that's gonna be fabulous. It's gonna be a backdrop for a wall of names of Salina alum veterans, so we'll start getting those in, we'll get those put in. And then we're doing the same thing with, um, we're gonna do an alumni recognition display case, we're working on the imagery for that. Um, we pulled together some images for an athletic display and, um, pretty much finished up an architectural display. So getting everything kind of pulled together, finished up, so when it's time, we can hand those over, do a print and get it installed, so, going well.
Any questions for Phil? Okay, no questions. We're gonna have Matt Hibner with Carmen Miller's up next.
Get a setup here for a minute. Might be good for the animation, so.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for allowing Mandy and I to be here. We've got Mandy Niekamp, she's the lead architect on the project, I'm the project manager, so thank you for the opportunity. Uh, we're gonna take this opportunity and just go through, uh, really the locally funded initiative, locally funded other, uh, master plan updates, uh, since we last met and reviewed this. Uh, what we're gonna go through really quick is just an existing school building update. Um, that's focused on the other projects that Phil did not touch on tonight, so we're gonna hit those just briefly. Uh, we're then gonna go through, uh, really the locally funded initiative and other budgets. Um, as we've, we've made significant, um, design updates and, and we've got through schematic design, we now are getting more real numbers that we can, we can present. Um, we're gonna go through of those items, we're gonna go through what's been determined by the district and what's not been determined. Then we're gonna talk about really the key factors for making those decisions that need to be made at this point in time and then really the timeline for making those. So we'll also have a slide at the end, if you have any additional, um, you know, items that you really want to look at. Uh, there, we, we do have a project website and that's where you can find that additional project information. So with that, um, we'll just quickly go in here, uh, as far as the existing middle school building. Um, this is gonna be something that, uh, there's gonna be potential there for, uh, re, reprogramming. The district has decided to keep this building in its entirety and any improvements to this building will be done as a locally funded initiative, uh, as part of that, the overall project. Uh, the next item here, the existing high school building. Uh, the district has previously decided to abate and demolish this building with the possible exception of the northernmost portion, which is currently called the, the Tri-Star Building Edition. Um, we're gonna look at that a little bit later as in what that potential use may be within the facility. Uh, the next item is the existing, sorry about that, uh, the existing elementary school building. That, this building has already been abated and demolished in June of 2024. Um, so that's just one item that we're really not gonna spend any time on, cause it's, it's, uh, been our, been demolished already. Similarly, the existing West Building, that was taken down last, or earlier this, this spring. Um, and I'm sorry, the West Building, yes, this spring. And, um, that's been completed and really that full PK through six elementary building, uh, complex is complete at this time. The last item here is the existing Ed Complex Building. Um, it, the district is undecided on what it will do exactly with this building, but it has decided it will not demolish the existing Fieldhouse portion of that. Uh, that was a decision that was made in, in March of 2025. And then any improvements to this building beyond the abatement demolition will be considered an LFI as well. So just a real quick update on those, uh, we're really kind of jumping into the overall master plan update at this point in time. So the, the two items that I just wanted to clarify, what's the difference between locally funded initiative and locally funded other? Uh, locally funded initiative, its integral or part of the co-funded project. So examples that, that have previously been done, like in the seven through 12 building, that's currently under construction, the cafeteria upgrades, the additional lighting, sound and seating that we have within them. Uh, we also had a, a, an addition for the high school gymnasium seating to take us from the minimum standard level number of bleachers to what was desired by the district. So those are locally funded initiatives. Locally funded other items are completely outside of the work of the co-funded project. So when we're working with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, they look at these items as something that we don't even talk about in the meetings with them. Um, it's really just, it's made sure that these are really clearly outside and, and it's strictly a district thing. So items there, the district office, athletics, any kind of maintenance items. So really what we're talking about from here on are a hundred percent LFI or LFOs. So, uh, locally funded other, uh, the project that was established early on in the, in the overall project, was $4,146, or $146,394. Now, it was known that that was never gonna account for everything within that overall budget. There were a lot of ideals they want to have, but maybe not a possibility. So just to kind of frame that, uh, we knew at the time that none of, all these things would not necessarily fit within that LFO budget. The goal of the master plan is to really set the direction for the long, long-term facility needs and, and wants of the district. And so we're continuing to build this master plan as a roadmap for making decisions that are needed along the way. So where we are today, um, with the overall LFO budget and, uh, LFI budget, as you can see down here, we've got the $4,146,394, that's the original budget. Um, the district has mentioned that there's a $200,000 Otten Family Fund that's been accounted for and that was set aside for the track and field. So that's something that we're gonna be factoring in as far as budgets, uh, moving forward. It's also been, uh, known to us, uh, more recently that there's another $277,355 that are from grants that have been awarded to the district that can be used for, uh, the, the track and field. There is, uh, so every month in our core team meetings, we have information about what's remaining in the, in the LFI co-funded budget. So what's currently in there as of November 11th is the $2,144,221. And then we also, as this project has now gone on for the past four years, there is, uh, uh, LFI interest that has, that as part of the co-funded project, the district is gonna get. So as of, uh, September 30th, that amount was $1,747,342. So add all these line items up, we're looking at a total LFI, LFO budget remaining of $8,515,312. So now, moving ahead, uh, looking at the overall master plan, this just gives you an overall idea of all the different things on the site, the seven through 12, East Campus as we're calling it, uh, that we're looking at. So one way that we wanted to just share this with you is, is really through an animation. Um, so I'm gonna cue this up here, make sure this works. So this really just helps visualize the, the potential of what this master plan could be. Uh, on the left side, you can see the seven through 12 building. Um, there's some additional parking potential right here for what we're calling is more of the athletic, uh, component or com, complex. This would be, uh, entry, gateway, ticket booth area right here to the right, entering into this overall facility. This portion that you see right on the screen right now is what we're, is the existing Tri-Star Building Edition. Just carry, bring this down a little bit. Uh, so repurposing that building into restrooms, concessions, locker rooms, we'll get to that here in a little bit. Um, you walk through really the entryway, which, uh, would serve a multitude of different extracurricular events. Uh, you have your restrooms and concessions available to all of these potential fields. You see that right here, um, referee locker rooms, player locker rooms, like I said, athletic storage that's gonna be needed on the site. And then this gives you an overall shot of that eight-lane track and field facility. Again, we're showing a full, long-term football field of 5,000. That has not, um, a hundred percent been decided of when that will be, but we're at least showing how that future master plan could unfold. You see the, the, the field events for track and field, you see a practice field here on the, the bottom right-hand side of the screen. Your existing tennis courts, um, would be connected to that and then the potential of a future soccer field here right on the, the bottom of the screen. So just to kind of give you an overview of the overall site there. So, uh, determine items, no decisions needed. Uh, we've gone through this before, but just want to kind of reiterate some of these items. The existing middle school building will remain. It will potentially be reprogrammed for various district needs. The cap building will remain in its current use. The existing tennis courts will, will remain in their current location. The existing varsity field will remain in its current location for now. Depending on the district's decision, this may be repurposed into a practice soccer field. The future track and field will be relocated. So, uh, the north and south orientation versus the six-lane east and west orientation that it currently is. Um, there are site, uh, infrastructure and stormwater detention implications to that and it does include a multi-purpose field inside the track as kind of what we would call like a base bid, uh, at this point. Uh, anything with Fountain Street will remain currently intact as it sits today. Um, there was initially some discussion on that early on and that was decided that, you know, we're gonna keep that currently as it is. Uh, th, there is a cafeteria in the seven through 12 building and there are no, are still no provisions for a standalone auditorium or performing arts center on the district's east campus. And then the last piece here, the Tri-Star Building of the existing high school building will remain. How it will be used and or reprogrammed is still to be determined. So moving along, uh, we got a, just an overall master plan here, kind of highlighting those knowns of how the, the buildings shown in green are gonna be. So you've got your main seven through 12 building, you see kind of at the center of the page. Uh, you've got your middle school building, uh, which is currently slotted to look at for head start in district offices. There's also the opportunity for extracurricular events, athletics to happen there, um, just with overflow space. Uh, we also have the existing Tri-Star Building shown there closer to the right-hand side and then your existing cap building. From an athletic fields perspective, um, we've got that existing soccer field to remain on that west side of the campus. Uh, we've also got the potential for, uh, a band practice on the, 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 um, parking lot that has not been built yet, um, that can easily be over-stripped for band practice. So that's an option there. Um, we're still evaluating, um, that, it's a, it's a very minor cost in the grand scheme of things, really just to overstripe that on the, the parking lot. But we do have that band practice lawn just to the north of that. Uh, we've also, you know, determined the location of that track and field, highlighted in green there and then your tennis courts that are gonna remain, so. So the big four items that, uh, really we're here to really talk about and look at in closer detail is the undetermined items and decisions that still need to be made. Uh, when will the varsity football field be relocated to the new track and field facility? So that's something that has, the district has recently brought to our attention, uh, that they would, you know, the, the plan would be to eventually relocate the football field, but the timing of that is really... but the timing of that is really the big question, you know? Is, is there going to be funds available that, that could happen? And so the timing of that is really, um, the, the big piece there. Number two, when or will the, the tri-star addition on the north side of the existing high school be reprogrammed as an athletic building? Uh, you know, we can minimally button that up or, you know, we can reprogram it into the various needs, uh, which we'll show you here what that would potentially look like. Uh, number three, what happens with varsity soccer? Like where does that ultimately, does it stay where it currently is? Or does it move closer to the proposed athletic complex, um, piece? And then number four, are there considerations of including synthetic turf in lieu of a natural turf on any of the athletic fields? So we'll take a deeper dive. So the first item here, we'll look at that varsity football field, uh, relocation. So you can see on the bottom left, uh, your current varsity football stadium down there. Uh, then your future where we, we showed it through the animation, just from a location perspective. Um, where, what this looks like from a cost perspective. Again, we've, over the last, uh, let me think here. In August, we provided schematic design level drawings to Peterson Construction, the construction manager on this project. Uh, they went back and along with their estimator and their, uh, preferred partners, they went through, uh, some numbers and were able to develop, uh, these costs that you see here. Um, so these are the all-in cost, as we would call it, or like total project cost. But in order to add the three thousand spectator seats on the home side, the, the other one thousand visitor seats on the east side, the five hundred ble- bleachers, um, on the north end zone for student seating, the press box, the scoreboard, the goalpost, et cetera. We'd be looking at an extra four point three four two million dollars for that. Um, and that's again, based on the latest, um, uh, schematic design drawings and estimates that we're getting. Um, this accounts for inflation, market conditions and all those sort of things. And again, total project cost. Uh, one thing that we worked through, um, in closer detail with Miami County as we, we developed the master plan was the, how many restrooms we would potentially need on a facility like this. And so i- as part of this, another one point three three seven million would be needed for a visitor side restroom concession and storage building. Um, so working through those, uh, now, now granted, there's some things here that, you know, what, whether or not you want concessions on that, that, uh, visitor side, whether you want all the storage on that side, those are options. But if we wanted to move football out here, we would have a minimum plumbing fixture requirement that we would need to hit with Miami County and hence the need for, uh, this potential facility over here. The last item, line item here, uh, we're looking at a plus, uh, additional cost of one point three seven two million. That would include the ticket booth, the masonry piers, the plaza, the decorative fencing, uh, some of the revised cap parking, uh, because we had to reorient some, uh, driveways to get to that facility because of the master plan. And then really all of the associated utility infrastructure, um, and site improvements that would be needed. So kind of looking at those three buckets for, uh, what would need to be included in addition to the, the new track and field facility. So the, the line item, uh, that you see here on this, this screen right here is the three point six seven million. That's the anticipated budget for the track and field complex. So this includes all of your eight lane track, your field events, your five hundred bleacher seats, your small press box on the east side of that master plan, the stadium lighting, the fencing, camera building, necessary infrastructure and utilities associated with the track and field facility. So, um, we also included a multi-purpose irrigated natural turf field in the center of that. That's really a district option of what they would potentially want if that's natural or synthetic. But we did get pricing, uh, we actually worked directly with the, the, um, one of the suppliers of, uh, field turf. Um, or, I'm sorry, the, it, I'll get to this here in a little bit, but the, the base of the track was also something that we evaluated. Um, whether or not you would want to go to a post-tension concrete base in lieu of an asphalt base, uh, that additional upcharge is a little over five hundred thousand dollars there, so five hundred and sixty-four, uh, thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. And again, that's budget pricing, but one of the major things about this post-tension concrete, this is really starting to gain a lot of traction in the, uh, sports arena, uh, of things is that it in- includes a fifty-year warranty on your base in lieu of a five or even ten-year warranty that you would sometimes see on asphalt. Um, so the life, the lifecycle cost of this, uh, they say are somewhere in that twenty to twenty-two year, um, payback timeframe. And if you can get, you know, significant, um, distance out of that, it really pays for itself. But again, this is a very, this is very much an option here, along with several of these different, um, components. So looking a little closer, uh, we just wanted to again, share, uh, just an image of what that would potentially be. You, you see on the far side, that's your visitor east side. You see the building just to the right of that, that's your restroom concession storage building that I was referring to earlier. The eight lane track, all the field events accounted for. And then the potential of this, this grandstand on the west side along with a larger press box, that would be all above and beyond, uh, what we'd be looking at for a future football field. So item number two, uh, will the tri-star addition on the north side of the existing high school building be reprogrammed as an athletic building? So again, ran the numbers of this facility, you can see it from a location standpoint and how this is the central piece of this athletic complex. Uh, this is a, a former more preliminary plan of what was developed. Um, and really more for graphical purposes, we left this in here. This plan has evolved and developed though, um, but essentially the, how it's being used is, is very similar. So you would have, uh, a wrestling practice room on the left there in green. That would be large enough for two full wrestling mats. We would also then, uh, right beside it in blue, have a, a multi-use wrestling practice slash, slash visitor locker room. So in the typical use of that, you know, that is used for a wrestling facility. Um, however, they can roll up those mats, there's a large o- overhead coiling door that connects to the wrestling, the other wrestling practice room. That can go up, they can move the mats in and then that becomes a full-fledged locker room for visitors. So, um, they've got the restrooms and showers there accounted for. Um, they, we also accounted for referee locker room, shower room and concessions along with the large group and family restrooms. Now, one thing that did change from a master planning level to where we are today, and again, this is a reflective of what was originally laid out. These restrooms are significantly bigger based on the number of plumbing fixture requirements we have to have for this, for this facility. So, um, that is what we priced in schematic design and that's what we got the numbers. Um, I also should point out that far north side of the building, um, that's really meant to be for just general and athletic storage for the district. And, you know, that's one thing that with this plan, your existing athletic storage building will be demolished because of its location. Um, so right in, in the middle of the track facility. So this is important that we would have this additional storage space accounted for. Here's just another view of this facility. Uh, you can see the concessions, uh, here, the restrooms are right around the corner, all kind of real close to this main entryway, this plaza that's being created, um, for the overall facility here. So the cost of this, uh, we've got three point seven two one million, uh, the, is the anticip- anticipated budget. Um, again, reprogramming of several new spaces, um, that I previously mentioned. Um, this also accounts for that button up of the existing building, uh, necessary utility refeeds and basic HVAC construction, uh, system reconnection because the salvage portion is where it was currently fed from. Uh, the items in gray below are really those items that we, we noticed a change in scope on from where we initially started, the plumbing fixtures, as I mentioned before. But also as we started to get a closer look of the existing facade of this whole building, um, there was definitely some, some areas where it was like, yeah, we need to really do a full restoration of this, replacement of metal panel. Um, so that's factored in with the, with the budget number you see here. Uh, some quick, you know, an option about the benefit of this, the location of these amenities to support those several athletic, uh, sporting events, you know, band and other extracurricular programs. I think that's, um, there, there is definitely that benefit that you would see by, by keeping this building and reprogramming this. Now, whether or not you just want to, you know, and as budget allows, button that up, you know, and do the minimum, yes, that can absolutely be done. We just got to factor how we, we account for the plumbing fixture requirements associated with the track and field for five hundred, uh, minimum spectators. Uh, number three here is what happens with varsity soccer? So currently, uh, remain at the existing soccer field location. Uh, the future would be relocating it, uh, over here. So you can see here on site, your current location is off to the west end of the, the site. And then the future would be potentially down here over by the rest of these athletic facilities, um, that are being considered. So if we look at really a budget of what we would need to maintain, uh, the, the current and kind of make reconnections, look at revising gate locations, adding a ticket booth, um, the, the additional walkways needed to make sure it accounts for the restrooms at the existing middle school, we'd be looking at approximately a hundred thousand dollars overall for that. Um, the benefit of this is you already got a soccer field, this is going to be less expensive. So totally recognize that as a plausible option. Here's just a quick view of that, that facility, um, does sit in your current, uh, detention area. And then the other option would be to move this facility, uh, over by, over to the east end of the site. And we're looking at a cost of about one point eight five three million, uh, for the anticipated budget. That does include a natural turf field irrigation, five hundred bleacher seats on the west side, a press box, lighting, dugouts, fencing, scoreboard, sound system, sound system and associated improvements. So, um, you know, really the benefit here, if you're going to spend the money is, is really getting it close to those other athletic fields and support facilities. Really making that one combined facility. Um, one thing that we do have accounted for in the, in some of the overall numbers is making sure that the fencing and gating is all enclosed as part of that entire facility, including the track, the tennis courts and, uh, if, if you would desire the, the soccer, the soccer field here in that location. And then just another aerial view of how that kind of works. You see your, um, you see your seven through twelve building in the distance. Uh, your existing tri-star building there where the restrooms, concessions, et cetera would be. You've got your dugouts here on the bottom right-hand side, your bleachers on the opposite side of that field, scoreboard, et cetera. And this would be, and we worked with the athletic depart, uh, director along with, um, the coaches, just to ensure that, uh, the field would be the proper dimensions that they, that they, that they want to ideally play. And I know something that they mentioned is they would really prefer to play on natural turf instead of synthetic on the, on the soccer side of things. So the last item here, uh, consideration of a synthetic turf in lieu of a natural turf on, on the athletic fields, uh, this would really, you know, just based on what I said, I think this really infers, um, that, that multi-purpose field in, in between the track and what that would become. Um, so we looked at the cost delta and you see a nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar, uh, anticipated budget to upgrade, upgrade from natural turf. And that does include the removal of the seating and field irrigation cost, um, that we would need to account for. So, uh, just some quick benefits here, consistency of plain surface, the lack of wear and tear. That's a, that's an important piece when you consider who would all potentially be playing on that field and how much it's in use, um, and what the, I mean, really the, the wear is on that from a perspective of how many sports are playing on it, um, who's all using it. So definitely, uh, there is some benefits of, of going to turf from that piece. The minimum, minimal concern of weather-related delays or cancellations. Um, those fields can drain very quickly and, uh, really be ready in, in a matter of time. And then consideration of, of hosting any potential playoff games or, you know, just really creating potential revenue, um, that's still a factor for consideration. So, uh, long-term, I do want to point out synthetic turf, uh, you know, they're, just to make sure everybody's aware, you know, there is a life expectancy on that. And typically what we hear from a lot of the vendors is anywhere from ten to twelve years that that top surface would need to be replaced. So we just want to, you know, make sure that that, that is a factor in the consideration of, of this. So the total cost summary here of these project scope items, um, you know, we, we still have to account for uh, any renovations at the middle school, uh, run, uh, building where we, we're looking at the district office and athletics. Um, there's also consideration of where Mercer County head start would be and what their total scope would, uh, need to account for. Uh, we, they have the existing fieldhouse, the minimal renovations that would need to occur over there as well. Um, but then you see all these items that we talked about, uh, adding up here. The items in green are those upgraded items that we talked about. So the multi-purpose field and the post-tension concrete base. Um, so those are just factors for consideration. You see the rest of these line items here, the two line items at the bottom, uh, the tennis court enhancement as part of the overall athletic complex. That's something that I'm sure we could be mindful of value engineering options on that. Um, in addition, really to, to a lot of these things. But I think that piece could really, um, that, that involves a lot of the, um, fencing, gating and even concrete and bleachers around that facility to make that a part of that overall complex. And then we did account for, um, an additional practice field in the old track and field location, what that cost would be to, to create over there, whether that's, you know, a, a multi-purpose field, a practice field for soccer, um, football, whatever it may be. But we've got about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars accounted for there. So in total, we're looking at a laundry list of, of options here, but we're looking at about eighteen point one four, or five four million in total potential project scope items. And just want to quickly point out, you know, that asterisk that really represents some alternates that have yet inside the co-funded project have not been a hundred percent decided on, which are the additional parking lot, um, which really is in close proximity to the future, um, extracurricular area, athletic area. Um, the, the band striping on that student dining parking lot, that's a pretty minimal cost. But again, we just wanted to be transparent with that. And then any additional upgraded cafeteria, loose furnishing that we potentially need to account for. And there's really no budget established on that yet either. So in total, that's what you see there and then, sorry about that. So, uh, again, just kind of looking at that as it compares to what we reviewed earlier, that eight point five one five million. Um, you know, there's an obvious delta there, um, and that's where we would have to understand what are the priority items for making these decisions? Are there going to be any fundraising that makes up that delta? And how do we look at that and stagger that out for whatever period of time that would be before we eventually would, uh, would step into any of these items here? So, uh, just kind of to really wrap this up, key factors for making these decisions, you know, obviously funds available and the cost implications of that, um, are going to be, you know, a, a unique factor for this. The long-term impact and alignment to the master plan, um, is, is another important piece. Uh, we, we want to respect historic relevance and nostalgia on any of these items. Uh, safety, inflation and its impact on cost, efficiencies of having your contractors on site and then just the overall timeline. Um, from a timeline perspective, that really feeds into, uh, this next slide here. So the track and field does need replace sooner than later, um, that's been long established. Uh, we really looked at this facility closer. Um, we, we worked with Peterson Construction to figure out if it was really plausible for this to potentially even get started in two thousand twenty-six. Um, unfortunately, it really did not make sense. There were a lot of like, um, if, utility. There were a lot of like utility reconnections that really did not ideally make sense until the existing high school building or vast majority of the high school building was torn down. So it would be our recommendation to look at the timing of that, really for that work to start in 2027. You know, I think there's some question on when in 2027. I would say, you know, the, from the construction partners, design partners, earlier in 2027 would be ideal, but we understand you still have to maintain your track and field program and what the implications of that would be. So, but it's really not a viable possibility for that to happen in 2026, and that is what we were studying, but it just came down to looking at how the dominoes would fall from a construction standpoint. So, and then really just to kind of conclude here with the LFI piece is, you know, working with Peterson Construction along with our team, our recommendation is to make at least the LFI and master planning decisions by May of 2026. This will allow for enough time to get the designs completed, bid out, and procured so that in that 2027 timeline, those dominoes can start to happen effectively. So with that, just kind of concluding here, the additional project information, I do want to point out, we do have a Bulldog Building Project website. It's got a lot of updates. You can see construction progress right there from November 20th. So just last week, they were flying the drone around. Great, great photography on that website. You can see any kind of updates as far as timeline, plans, the elementary, the high schools. So recommend you go in there. And then we also have, you know, just a quick bit of information. If there are any additional questions about the project, please reach out to Phil Metz or Brooke Gessler. And with that, I'll potentially answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you, Matt.
Three slides to your summary pricing. Right, so now you're saying it's an $18 million bill if we all, if we did all of that?
All of that.
And you've got two undetermined, so that's another four to five million dollars.
Depend, yeah.
And then the existing for Head Start, that would be federal, so we wouldn't pay for that, but those two to be determined, that's every bit of four million dollars.
Yeah, and we got to work through that scope a little bit more of, you know, what's truly needed there, what's not. But yeah, absolutely.
Well, just to button up the field house, that was the last number, was 1.7?
Seven, yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Guys, do we have any additional questions for Matt? Okay. Next, we're going to move on to the public participation. To participate in a public, or in our meeting here, you do have to sign in. A couple of things I do want to remind people of, you will be limited to three minutes. Also, all questions be directed at myself and the board. And if we don't have an answer for you, please provide us ample time to get back with you, and we will respond to all questions if we don't have the answers here tonight. When you do come up to the microphone, please state your name and where you're from, and then we'll start the timer with three minutes. Is there anybody that, we got?
Teresa signed in.
Okay. Is there anybody else that needs to sign in? Oh, we got one more, Brooke, that wants to sign.
I'm Teresa Howick. That's H-O-W-I-C-K. I'm from Salina, graduated from Salina High. My main question is, Adam, is the lights that seem to be going on and off, or staying on or staying off, or over here in the new school?
Okay.
Okay. There for a while, it seemed like they were all on, and now the left wing, as you're looking at the school, I'm talking about the left wing?
Okay.
That does seem to be off during the day, but the rest seem to be on.
You're, the west side you're referring to, correct?
I don't do north, south, east, or west.
I just want to make sure we're talking same language.
You're looking at the front, it's this side.
Okay.
Okay? I was just wondering, because at one time I kind of suggested maybe those could be on a timer, and I was told at that time that it was, they were all hardwired in. So now that I'm seeing that that wing is off during the day, but the rest of them are on, and then the left is coming on as it gets darker, is that on a timer of some sort that has come about? And can we possibly get the rest of it on timer so that they're not on during the day?
Okay.
When it doesn't seem to be necessary to have on?
Okay.
And I will need your email address sometime before we leave here.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yep, it's listed on the website also, but I will give you.
You know, I've not been able to find either one of your guys', none of your email addresses on our website.
Okay, I will make sure I have it to you before you leave.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up is Amber.
Okay. Am I ready? Okay, sorry. Good evening, my name is Amber Dunaway. I live in Salina. I'm here accompanied with my son Peyton Stogler and lawyer Ross Spanky. I'm here to address concerns about how the district policies and due process procedures were handled in a recent disciplinary situation involving my child and his suspension that is still being upheld to this day from his wrestling season. I'm not here to go into the details and the whole situation itself. I'm here because the district's policies were not followed, and the result was a necessary punishment that should have never occurred. The district has written procedures that outline how investigations should be conducted, how communication should occur with the families, what evidence must be reviewed before consequences are issued, and how decisions should be made and documented. In this case, those procedures were not applied consistently or correctly. Steps were skipped, communication was delayed or missing, key decision-makers were not present when they should have been, and as a result, a disciplinary action was put in place, and then later revised only to, only after a significant amount of time had passed. When a suspension or consequences revised, any remaining penalty or set-out time connected to that decision should not be continued. The policy does not support carrying over any extra time, and doing so only adds to the original procedural failure. My concern is not just what happened in this situation with my son. My concern is that if the policies are not followed for one student, they may not have been followed for others. That undermines trust, consistency, and fairness across the district. I'm asking that the board ensure that all staff follow district due processes exactly as written. All communication, they are enforced and met. No additional penalties remain in place when a disciplinary action is overturned, and then accountability is applied at every level, not just to students, but also the staff. Families should not have to fight to make sure policies are followed. The procedures exist to protect students, protect staff, and maintain the integrity of the district. When they are not followed, it harms everyone. I have followed the procedures throughout this whole situation, and that is why I'm in front of you today. Thank you for your time and for ensuring that our district's policies are upheld consistently and fairly. If you have any other questions, I will gladly take the time to discuss this matter into more detail. My phone number is 419-953-1480, and then thank you for your time.
Can you state that one more time, please?
Of my phone number?
Yeah. 1480?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on to the treasures report.
Okay, thank you. First up is to approve the minutes of the October, excuse me, October 13th meeting. Number two is to approve the October cash summary report, revenues of $6,964,364.64 and expenditures of $7,583,921.89. Approve the cash reconciliation report for October of the $70,117,325.16. Eighty, or 38,823,420.43 is for the building project. Number four is to approve the checks written for the month of October. Number five is to approve the FY '26 permanent appropriations as presented. Number six is to approve the reimbursement to the city of Salina to $273,390.75 for the four-way stop in the Wayne Street Improvement Project. Number seven is to accept the following donations, and I'm not going to go through all of these, but we have very generous donations and a lot of them for the month. So there's several, you know, for TriStar Ag IT for jackets, there's one for the FFA National Convention, there's one for the FFA for volunteering at the Aggro, Aggro, I guess that's how you'd say that, Aggro Expo. What else do we have? There was $11,900 donated by John Family Services for the New York trip. There was another donation from the United Methodist Church, Grand Lake United Methodist Church, for the New York trip. Another donation for New York from Mark and Robin Armstrong, and also from Ethan and Laura James Fund. Those were all for the New York trip. There's a donation from the Moose for, to athletics to cover admissions for fans that wore green to the Boys and Girls Soccer Tournament. There was two donations for the Salina High School Carrying Closet from the VFW in Salina Class of 1958. There was a donation from the Moose to athletics toward the purchase of the STEM unit, which actually has to do with physical therapy, if you're wondering that. And there's a thousand from the Moose to the Spirit Squad, 2,000 from the Eagles to the Spirit Squad for the Team Nine Thanksgiving Dinner, 1,000 from the VFW to Salina Elementary Wellness Center Carrying Closet, a donation from Ethan James Fund again to Salina Elementary for the Bruckner Field Trip and Glenn Helen Field Trips. There's a $2,000 anonymous donation to TriStar Med Prep for purchasing food for the Pack the Palette, and there were two donations for canned food drive at TriStar from B&amp;L Construction in Dillon Cell, and then there's a donation from the VFW for guidance lessons at Salina Elementary, and a $10,000 donation from Kyle Mann Tilburg in memory of Robert Shen to the TriStar Construction Program. And that's all I have. That was a lot of donations, again, very generous and.
We have a great community.
Right, we do.
Yes, it's amazing.
Very thankful for those. And that is all I have.
Any questions for Michelle? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Carl, a second?
I'll second, go ahead, John.
John will second.
John?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Adam?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
And Mr. Hiltman?
Aye.
Okay, this is Gessler, you're up.
So first, I'm asking the board to approve the personnel items as presented in the attachments and that are online. So that's the first piece. There are nothing out of the ordinary. We have retirements, we have resignations, we have some subs, classified subs, and then we also have some supplementals for pupil activities for athletics, volunteers for various sports, and CES Spring Musical. So I'll stop there.
Okay, any questions on the first part? Can I get a motion to approve, please?
I'll make the motion.
Julie, a second?
I'll second.
John?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
And Mr. Hiltman?
Aye.
For the next item, I'm asking the board to approve the treasurer's contract for the term of August 1, 2026, through July 31 of 2028, with the revised addendum previously approved July 21 of 2025.
I move to accept.
Second. John and Carl?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
And Mr. Hiltman?
Aye.
Moving on to other business, I'm asking the board to approve an online learning feasibility plan in addition to a revised athletic worker pay scale, and I'd like to speak to each of these if I could, please, just briefly. So the online learning feasibility plan is a plan that the state of Ohio used to require, and that allowed districts to not have to count three calamity days if they were able to have learning, distance learning, essentially. Well, that requirement has since passed, gone by the wayside from the state perspective. However, the state auditors still require some kind of action. For our district, we are unable to meet all of those online learning criteria that were set forth, synchronous learning, meaning students, teachers can be on device, students are on devices, that it's equitable, you know, access, and we could not guarantee that. So this plan says that it is not feasible for us to count three calamity days as online learning. So that's what that is about. As far as the revised athletic worker pay scale, this was just a cleanup, making sure that there was some language that aligned in terms of how we refer to physicians that took tickets in different venues, and we also made sure that our line judges for volleyball were able to get compensated. So those were the biggest, I guess, shifts there, which aren't that big.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve, please?
I'll make the motion.
Carl, in a second?
I'll do it.
Julie?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
And Mr. Hiltman?
Aye.
And again, this next part is just a first reading of the board policies that I will ask the board to approve at our December meeting, so no action needed for those, which moves me along to Head Start. So I'm asking the board to approve the Head Start report as attached. Do that first.
Any questions on that, guys? Okay, can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll move.
John, a second?
So move.
Mark?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
And Mr. Hiltman?
Aye.
The next piece underneath Head Start is requesting the reallocation of funds from one line item to another. Again, there are a couple, several different actually reallocations that are in there. And then if you look, the carry-on to the top of page five, that ends with the request for reallocation of $1,000 from the TTA 419 line to TTA Supply Line. Again, that's to just, to cover costs for training materials.
Any questions on those reallocations?
I'll make a motion.
Carl?
I'll second.
Julie?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
Mr. Hiltman?
Aye.
And the last piece underneath the Head Start part is, I'm asking the board to approve not to hire Tara Gomez, head teacher effective October 17, 2025, and to approve a 20-day extended. extension of probation for Rachel Walker, a teacher.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Julie, a second?
I'll second.
Carl?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schlecker?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman?
Aye.
And finally, for my report, underneath TriStar, I'm asking the board to approve med prep observation sites in addition to approving med prep STNA training hours.
Any questions on med prep? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second, please.
I'll second.
Mark?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schlecker?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman?
Aye.
Okay. Well, we are going to move into executive session. If I can get a, a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Julie, in a second?
I'll second.
Carl?
Okay. Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schlecker?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
Mr. Hilsman?
Aye.
Can you just fade the action afterwards? There's not going to be. What does that involve in the executive?